Good afternoon. I will call to order the January 28th meeting of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. My name is Matt Brown. I serve as President of the Commission. I'm joined today by Commissioners Schrader, Lupey Pierre, Suesi, Kogel, and Rockwell. Our first item in business today is to approve the actions from the January 14th meeting. Commissioners may have a motion to approve those actions.
We have a second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And that motion carries. Next item in business is to approve the agenda. You can find hard copies of the agenda in the hallway. We'll determine which items will be considered on consent, which will be continued to another meeting, and which we will discuss today. So, starting at the top of the agenda, item one is a Central Point Energy Substation at 2406 McNair Avenue North. Several applications for a new -- related to a new energy substation as well as a preliminary plat. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item one? Seeing no one, we'll put that on consent. Item two is the lush addition at 984 through 990 Central Avenue Northeast. Variance and site plan review for a building addition at that location. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item two? Seeing no one, we'll put that on consent. Item three is the Opus Office Addition at 3701 Yzeta Boulevard. That's a conditional use permit for height. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item three? Seeing no one, we'll put item three on consent. Item four is the ICCM Family Life Center Parking at 1801 through 1805 Park Avenue. Several applications for a parking facility at that location. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item four? Seeing no one, we'll put item four on consent. Item five is 2915 Dupont Avenue, 1,006 West Lake Street, and 2,900 Colfax Avenue South. Several applications for a new multifamily building at that location. That item will be continued to the February 11th meeting if anyone is here for that. Item six is the Planned Parenthood Uptown Minneapolis Clinic at 1,200 Lagoon Avenue and 2916 Emerson Avenue South. Several applications for a clinic, an office building at that location. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item six? Seeing no one, we'll put item six on consent. Moving along, item seven is 1724 and 1728 Nicollet Avenue, 1727 LaSalle Avenue. Several applications for a mixed-use building at that location. We'll discuss item seven if anyone is here for that. Finally, item eight is Malcolm Yards at 445 Malcolm Avenue Southeast, 419 through 504 29th Avenue Southeast, and 501 30th Avenue Southeast. Several applications for a project at that location. Item eight will be also continued to the February 11th meeting if anyone is here for that. So, our agenda as amended is as follows. Items one, two, three, four, and six will be on consent. We'll discuss item seven. Item five will be continued to the February 11th meeting, and item eight will also be continued to the February 11th meeting. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And that motion carries. Moving along, may I have a motion to continue items five and eight to the February 11th meeting?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And that motion carries. We have no committee of the whole consent agenda today, so we'll move on to our public hearings. And at this time, I'll open the public hearing for the items on the consent agenda. So again, that's items one, two, three, four, and six. Again, is anyone here to speak on any of those items? Yes? You had a question, or you were here to speak on an item?
Well, on item one, we live directly next door to the -- where they want the substation.
Okay. You should come to the microphone if you'd like to speak, and if you don't mind stating your name and address for the record.
My name is Jeff Halverson, and we live at 2414 23rd Avenue North or 2414 McNair. It's kind of a -- kind of a -- we have two -- it's not two places. We just have two addresses for one house. But we live right next door to the proposed substation, and I was kind of wondering how big it's going to be. It says in here that they want to use the three lots there that are available.
Yep, yep. So, and I guess since you're the only one here, we can just consider this as part of the combined public hearing. But I might just ask staff to make a brief presentation in that case to answer your question, or did you have any other questions or comments about that?
Right. I was -- because I have a home-based business. I have a small window and door company. And I had previously bought part of that lot. And I was wondering if there would be any way that I could square off my lot. What we did was we bought from the lot pin in the farthest back out to the easement of the curb and gutter, out to the apron on the driveway. And because originally, we didn't own that, and in hindsight --
Yeah, right, right, yeah.
In hindsight, I was thinking that I would like to expand my lot a little bit, squared off at any rate.
Yeah, yeah. And that's something we can't really resolve in this meeting. But what I might ask you to do is after this public hearing, perhaps you could just connect with Peter Crandall, the staff person on this item, just out in the hallway here, and he can maybe have a conversation about that. We don't really have the ability to make changes to that plat at this point, but perhaps there's an opportunity to have a further conversation.
Sure. And can -- is there some way to find out how big this is going to be?
Yeah, Peter can talk to you. I think maybe it'd be best. He would have that square footage just offhand, so you can just maybe connect with him in the hallway.
Okay.
Just during this meeting.
All right, thanks.
So Peter's right over here. All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on any of the consent agenda items? Again, that's items one, two, three, four, and six. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. And Commissioner Lupey Pierre?
Um, yes, I just want the record to reflect that I'll be recusing myself from voting on item number two to a previous business relationship.
All right. Thank you. And is there anyone who would like to make a motion on the consent agenda items? Commissioner Rockwell?
I will move to pass the consent agenda.
All right. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries. Moving along to our one item for discussion today, that is item seven. And staff is Ms. Wallace, 1724, 1728 Nicollet Avenue.
Good evening, Commissioners. The project before you is at 1724 and 1728 Nicollet Avenue and 1727 LaSalle. The site is just over 30,000 square feet and is triangular in shape. It's currently split zoned, including one of the underlying parcels itself is split zoned between the Ora III District and the C II District. The site borders Interstate 94 to the north. And here you can see the site in a couple of maps submitted by the applicant. The applicant has proposed a new mixed-use building that would be six stories with 123 dwelling units and 2,900 square feet of commercial space. The applications requested include a rezoning to add the split zoning overlay to allow development on the split zone site, a conditional use permit to increase the maximum allowed height from four stories or 56 feet to six stories or 77 and a half feet. And just a note that some of these applications are a little unique due to the application of the split zoning overlay district, variance to increase the maximum floor area ratio from 2.38 to 2.94, variance to reduce the minimum loading requirement from one small space to zero, and variance to reduce the side air setback along the south property line, which is just where the -- kind of where the split zoning occurs basically, and site plan review. Here's a site plan of the site. And I'm going to focus my presentation on the exterior materials and some of the landscaping questions. So, the site currently is vacant. Along Nicollet Avenue, there is a surface parking lot in the two parcels at front Nicollet, and then along LaSalle, there is a community garden. The applicant has proposed the shape of the building due to -- there are some sidewalk and stormwater easements on the site that are particularly constraining the buildable area along LaSalle. So, the applicant has proposed to set back the building and orient it in the fashion shown on the site plan due to some of those constraints in that area. And then, as part of that, they have proposed what is shown on the site plan as a community garden, which the applicant hasn't fully formed exactly how that would operate yet. But one option that I heard discussed was, you know, potentially having garden plots for residents and then potentially opening that up to the public as well. The applicant has also proposed some extensive landscaping along the sidewalk that runs along the north side of the site, and that's the sidewalk easement that I previously mentioned. So, I'm going to quickly go through the elevations on the site. The applicant has proposed a variety of exterior materials, including stone, multiple colors of metal panel, multiple colors of cement panel, several different types of concrete, and a wood look resin and stone. So, and then here are a couple of renderings of the site. I'll go back to those. So, the project does require a number of alternative compliance. There are a number of requests for alternative compliance, including building placement along LaSalle, visual interest for blank walls, exterior material durability as the percentage of less than 5/8 inch fiber cement is exceeded on the west elevation, the quantity of exterior materials, because between the various colors of exterior materials and the number of them, it could appear, you know, to be more than 10 materials on the building as a whole. And then, the windows on the residential portion of the north elevation and ground floor active functions, that's basically just due to the location of the garage door. Staff has recommended three conditions regarding the exterior materials, including that the building should not exceed the 30% of less than 5/8 inch fiber cement on any elevation. And then, the two additional conditions here, one of them is that the number of colors of each material shall be limited as shown on your screen, and then that each elevation shall -- excluding color variation, shall be limited to no more than three. In addition, I wanted to speak to -- I believe we have potentially some folks from the neighborhood group here to discuss the community garden and how that will function on site. I know that there was some hope that the applicant might enter into an agreement with the neighborhood group to, you know, pledge a certain percentage of these units as open to the public. And just as a note on that, that, you know, typically, we would, you know, if the applicant was amenable to it, potentially advise them to -- encourage them to work with the neighborhood group or that sort of thing. But none of the applications that are being requested are, you know, would specifically allow us to require that they provide some public space on site. And I think with that, I will stand for any questions.
And Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Hearing none. I will open the public hearing on the side of my desk. I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first, or someone on behalf of the applicant. So if you'd like to come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Aaron Johnson, 4053 Bryant Avenue South. Today, the applicant would like to have the opportunity to discuss items F5, F6, and F8 of the conditions of approval. So, the first condition of approval that we'd be speaking about is the condition F5 that is -- would be placing a 30% limit on the cementitious panel on any elevation. We wanted to clarify, and actually, the slide we left off on here is good for discussing. The whole -- we are keeping the spirit of the code, or the guideline, I should say, for the whole building, where the whole building for the cementitious percentage -- or cementitious percentage is under 30%. It's at 28.5. But in terms of the west facade, which is the facade we see here and plan, it's the shortest facade of the building, and it's also pushed about 95 feet back from the property line and even further from the street. We are placing a community garden in front of it, and I can flash the elevation up so you can see what we're talking about.
If we can go to the overhead.
So, this small section right here represents that area we're talking about. That is currently at 47% of a cementitious panel, where we have, you know, a stone base, a composite cementitious panel, and a small amount of cementitious panel on the base. Like I said, this facade will be pushed back about 95 feet from the street, and there will be, you know, trees in front from the street. So, the view from the street to this facade is very limited. So, this is a point that we would like to discuss. The next two conditions of approval that we'd like to discuss are items F6 and F8, which they seem to be the same condition, limiting the number of principal materials. As we count, we have about six primary materials. We're allowed to have three. The intent is that this project spans, you know, two different major streets, being Nicollet and LaSalle. And whenever we do that and have a larger-scale project like this, we're concerned with making not every street the same character, and we use the materials and add materials to help create that character. So, what we have, which is on the east side of Nicollet, we do have a large palette of materials, but we believe that it's in good taste and good taste for the character of the street and the kind of urban identity that we're trying to build. So, on the east side, we do have a stone base. We do have --
Can you move it up slightly so we can see it on the screen?
Sorry. Stone on the ground floor. We have architectural concrete, you know, on the south portion of that street, metal panel, cementitious panel, and then also a small portion of composite wood, which is a resin. So, that is more than three materials. And we're, like I said, we're trying to develop the right identity for that street and the character. We just felt that if it was limited to three, the character of the building and the massing might be dumbed down a little bit too much where it doesn't add to the value of the neighborhood, which -- so that's what we'd like to discuss for items F6 and F8.
All right. And anything else? I guess we can see if any Commissioners have questions of you. Commissioner Magrino?
Yeah. On the Nicollet Avenue frontage, is that intended to actually be signage that says Yellow Tree and YT at that size?
No, that's a placeholder.
Okay. So, you wouldn't -- I mean, how -- is that like six feet tall, or how?
Yeah, it's about five.
Okay.
But we would have this composite wood be in that place. What signage is actually on it is yet to be determined, and...
You meant -- so you'd put like the name of the apartment building or something on that? Probably wouldn't be quite that big.
No.
Okay. Just wanted to double-check that.
Okay. And any further questions of the applicant? Commissioner Kogel?
So, just to be clear on the discussion items that you outlined, you're interested in ideally like removing those three conditions?
Yes.
Okay. Great. And then I had another question about the traffic demand management plan and the high-speed garage door and just the parking situation in general. So, are you committed to the conditions outlined in the travel demand management plan?
Yeah, we will continue to work with Met Transit and the city departments to mitigate the measures for safety.
I see. And encourage multimodal uses?
Of course.
And is there public parking in the parking that's being provided? Is that an option, or is it exclusively for residents?
It's exclusively for residents. This zoning, we do have a retail component, but from this zoning, our retail parking is zeroed out.
And is the parking paid -- like, do the residents have to pay for the parking?
That would be a question for the applicant or the developer themselves.
Yes.
Yes. We're getting a yes.
Okay. I guess my concern is just that there is a -- that you're not working against yourself in trying to encourage people to not have cars, since this is the densest neighborhood in the city. And whatever that can be done to make that happen is greatly helpful, especially when we -- I'm slightly concerned about having access on Nicollet and providing, even with a high-speed garage door on a transit corridor. So, anyway, that's it.
What I can do to address your concern is that we have taken measures to reduce the number of parking, or the area of parking that we're building by utilizing a semi-automated system so that to meet the demand, we're using less square footage of the city to do it.
Thanks.
And Commissioner Lupey Pierre?
Um, yeah, I just had a couple of questions. One was, what -- in terms of the resin portion of the east facade, do you know how -- for example, I think what Commissioner Magrino might have been getting at is if it falls within the allowable square footage for signage for the building, and could it be considered -- do you know how it stands in regard to that, if it was considered signage or not? Not just the letters, because we do draw a box around the letters anyway, so I'm just wondering how far off you are from that anyway, if it was considered signage?
I'm not sure that we've looked at that in terms of the code, and there's no determination yet that that portion will actually be signage.
Ah, okay. And then my other question is, you mentioned earlier about how the different streets have different identities, and I think that makes some degree of sense in terms of the north and south elevation. But can you explain a little bit more, because that you lost me when we got to this, the Nicollet part, just east elevation, as to how that all makes sense there? Like, I get the two separate streets, but I didn't quite get why it's all on the one side. So, could you just maybe explain the reasoning behind that a little bit better?
Are you asking in terms of the number of materials?
Yes.
Okay. Well, what we're trying to do is modulate the upper portion of the building, where that creates the division between metal panel and the cementitious panel. And on the lower portion of the building, we're trying to modulate that too by utilizing where the access entry is. And when we get to this south side of the building, there is an adjacent building that is a one-story retail building, which is the Ace Hardware that's built right up to it. And I suppose that this identity of this piece is bike storage. We wanted it to stand out as something as part of a community and not just another part of the building, so it's identifiable as bicyclists will use it. And so, that kind of division and those functions behind the spaces are kind of creating that need for those different materials. And then, obviously, the retail portion is the portion that has stone that's outlining the function behind that.
Thank you.
Okay. And Commissioners, any further questions of the applicant? If there are none, we can move on to some other speakers. If there's anyone else who would like to speak on this item, you can just decide who goes first, I guess, and come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Evening. I'm Robert Scaffy. I coordinate the gardens for Stevens Community, for Stevens Square Community Organization. And I guess our largest concern is that the garden has been there since 1997 and has supported like 25, at least 25 gardeners in the neighborhood. And I know that there's a community garden in the makes, which I appreciate that very much, but it's mainly for the tenants. And what's been so wonderful about LaSalle Garden is it's brought together a community of people to get together and have potlucks, and just it brings safety. It brings a central feeling to the area. And my concern is that we're going to lose that. If it's open first just to the tenants, then it's not going to be a full community garden anymore. And Stevens, the community has always been very passionate about its green space. And we do have a garden on the south side, and I'm trying right now to figure out ways to build more plots just so the people that are losing their spots per -- I guess it'll probably be at least a couple of years before we have space again. So, I just wanted to throw out that before Scott got up to speak. But, um, yeah. Do you have any questions about the garden, or?
All right. I'm not seeing any questions at the moment.
Okay.
Right. Thank you. And next speaker. Come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
I guess I'm not really sure to say it. My name is Kalila Lawrence. I'm at 20 Groveland Avenue. This building that they're proposing to build basically is on my block. I live right there. One of the best things about gardening there is that it is right on my block, so no matter what my schedule is like, all summer long, I can get there to take care of the vegetables I'm growing. But it's also been where Robert, who just was speaking, has been a longtime friend of mine, and being that he manages the gardens, I was able to get in there and find my space. And it's just really like very much the center of our worlds when the weather is nice enough to garden. And like, we've put in a lot of work back there making it into our space, and now that we're going to be losing it, we're just really intent on finding a way to make it where a lot of us could still maybe have a space to do that in. Like Pamela, she's going to be talking to too. She coined our little space that we created last year, like our backyard, because like three of us, the most -- three, five, eight of us at any given time, we all live within a block of there, and that is like our backyard. That's where we get to grow our vegetables and our flowers and stuff like that. And we're just trying to do what we can, hang on to what we can. So, I don't really know what else to say.
Thank you. And next speaker, please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Pamela Fensky, and I live at 22 Oak Grove. And when I moved back into my neighborhood, a couple of years ago, I was able to be a participant in the community garden. It is amazing. We got together, all of the people that I met there are now friends. We are a community. It's a community for everyone in the community. People bring their dogs. People that work in the neighborhood come and bring their lunches and sit there. And we work very hard to be a really good community and care about the community as a whole. It is what we call our backyard. We get together for gatherings. Many of us also got together and got to know each other and do volunteer work in other areas of the community for green spaces. Sorry. I love that space so much, I'm about to cry. We bring our pets. We talk about what else is going on in the community, trouble areas, what we can do, how we can work together, not just at the garden, but the whole community. And we're going to lose that. And what they're proposing is a very, very small space. Many of us are not going to be able to get a space, and it might be gated, and it's just sad. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Thank you. And next speaker. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Scott Artley. I'm the executive director for the Stevens Square Community Organization, and I'm also a resident. I live just down the block from this proposed development at 116 Groveland Avenue. I'm here today because I was approached by a number of gardeners who said they wanted to come and let you know how important this garden space is to them. And so what I'm here for is to talk about ways that we might address everyone's feelings around this and come to a good solution. So, the, as we already heard from Robert, the LaSalle North Community Garden has been around since 1997. Neighborhood looked really different at that point. And now, neighborhood residents are overwhelmingly supportive of Yellow Tree's project and excited to see a parking lot turn into an active hub for new community members and visitors. The neighborhood is ready for an investment in underused spaces. And today, I asked the city to approve Yellow Tree's development with the condition that it work with the Stevens Square Community Organization to develop a shared use agreement with SSCEO. Today, I reviewed the Minneapolis 2040 Plan and saw a few policies that I wanted to just bring out and highlight in relationship to this project and the impending loss of community garden space, true community garden space. Policy 100, the very last one, empowers neighborhood engagement through robust neighborhood-based organizations. So that's why we're here right now, to do this advocacy work. Policy 9, Open Spaces in New Development, about creating new open spaces in public and private places. An action attached to that is to encourage the creation of equitable, publicly accessible open spaces and plazas that connect to other public or semi-public spaces through incentives and requirements. Policy 8 says public safety through environmental design. This area often was a place where there was crime happening, and so having eyes on the street there was really critical to turn it into a safer place for our community. Policy 81, Social Connectedness, and this is really why these, these community gardeners could really speak to this better than I can. But I wanted to point out an action under that policy 81 was through programs and the design of community spaces, including parks, community and youth centers, new buildings and city streets. Minneapolis can foster environments that increase social connectedness, helping to improve individual health and resilience, and leading to stronger, more engaged communities and greater involvement in city decision-making. I think it's a good example of all of these folks came for the community garden, and now they're very active in other aspects of the neighborhood. Policy 61, Environmental Justice and Green Zones. So, the city of Minneapolis defines environmental justice as the right to a clean, safe, and healthy quality of life for people of all races, incomes, and cultures. Environmental justice emphasizes accountability, democratic processes, remedying the historical impact of environmental racism, just and equitable treatment, and self-determination. The city has articulated that green space is an amenity and a right, and that public-private nonprofit partnerships will be an effective means of moving forward the goal of transforming the urban landscape. As a low-income neighborhood and diverse neighborhood, greening initiatives have been central to our work as the Stevens Square Community Organization for over two decades, providing a fair and democratic means for residents to find joy in community gardening, making real impacts on our livability goals. We see a formal partnership with Yellow Tree as a win-win, using our demonstrated success to address equitable access to green space and effective means to get eyes on the street for better public safety and an opportunity to make connections between neighbors. So again, today, I asked the city to approve Yellow Tree's development with the condition that it work with the Stevens Square Community Organization to develop a shared use agreement to bring on SSCEO as an active partner in the management and use of the planned community garden in a way that promotes equity, environmental justice, public safety, and social connectedness. Thank you. How do you take any questions, too?
And Commissioner Coleman?
First, I'd like to thank you all for providing testimony with that pounding in the back. I'm sure it was not helpful to your concentration, certainly not helpful to mine. I am interested in both, from your perspective, the community's perspective, and the developers' perspective, to know what conversations have gone on so far and where you're at in those conversations at this point in time.
Sure. So, this process has moved pretty quickly. In June of 2018, Yellow Tree came in to talk about a development in the neighborhood that's essentially across the street on Niccollet. And there was a fair amount of talking between the community and the developer. I wasn't on board, on staff yet, so I don't know exactly what happened. But from what I understand, everybody was very into this development happening. And so seeing the, I was approached by Aaron from DJR Architecture about making a presentation at a community meeting, and this was our December Neighborhood Development Committee meeting, and we haven't really had a chance to talk about it as a board very much. There have been no formal agreements. Everything's just moving really quickly, and that's why we wanted to make sure that we took advantage of this hearing happening today to make a formal appeal, to make that happen.
All right. And Commissioner Coleman, did you wish to have the applicant address your question as well at this point?
I would.
Okay.
And particularly to the point of whether or not there has been any discussion about a shared use agreement, as was suggested by the speaker.
Ask the applicant to come to the microphone and address that.
Good evening. Rob Lubinow with Yellow Tree. Live at 46th Park. Talking to some of the concerns and also maybe even stepping back further. I think on all of our infill developments and how we approach buildings, we look at how can the neighborhood be an amenity to our building, and then how can our building be an amenity to the neighbors? So I think this is really a showpiece of how that got brought into play. So it's not, it's not often, and even if we can go back to this image, I think this is a great opportunity where we have a very dynamic site where it's on Niccollet, it's on LaSalle, and there's also a walkway, a public walk on the north side of the site. So I'm sure you can see the development of that process as it goes through and how we create that public realm, how we bring people through the space, how we're providing commercial space along Niccollet, and then also how we're maintaining the community gardens on the far west side. And then even going in, you know, where's the best spot to have that garden? You know, we have wear walls with water collection coming from a roof, green roofs. All those things came into play. The topic on point is the community garden. Absolutely, you know, I don't want to lose the point that we want our residents to be a part of the neighborhood too. So it's not like they're the segregated piece, that they're just different. We want them connected with the neighborhood, and how do you do that? I can't think of a better way of having a community garden connecting with neighbors, you know, Stevens Square and beyond. Final point of context, this is currently a community garden. You can see the outline of a building, and then there is the larger community garden to the south. So how does that give us opportunities? I think it's sharing spaces. So sharing tools, sharing knowledge, how that's being used. We're definitely open in our previous meetings. We want to work with them. We know how to build and manage apartment buildings. We don't know how to manage space. So I still want to stick to the point that it's a space for our residents, for sure, but it's also partnering with the neighborhood. So, any questions? Kind of an approach or clarity?
Commissioner Coleman?
There was mention of a fear of a gate. Is that in the plan?
Well, last time we spoke, we actually saw that as a benefit or heard it was a benefit to have a gated space. So, and these aren't tall gates. They're, they provide some buffer in between, you know, kind of public-private space, community garden, whatnot. So for us, it's how do we design that space?
Keep the rabbits out.
What's that?
Keep the rabbits out.
Yeah, that too. I'm not sure if we have any deer, but I hear we have coyotes now. So right here, this is, this is LaSalle. So how do we capture this space and also provide, you know, something, a walkway that people want to use? So we're looking at lighting options, lighting the trail, but also have, you know, benches. But then, yes, there is a three-foot tall fence around the garden, also separating it from a pet run. But then primarily, it's plantings along the south. So it is a barrier, but it also has plantings kind of as a buffer before you get to the community garden. So, and egress, so here's a gate. And there's the gate to the dog run. But then again, you know, it's this, there's already, you know, things that are in place that they have that we would love to be a part of, and even, you know, the fees, where does the fees go to for these individual planters? Is it the group as a whole? I would love that to be the case.
And Commissioner Kogel?
So, from what you said, it sounds like generally speaking, you're amenable to working with the neighborhood. I'm interested in perhaps putting forward what was suggested as an additional condition regarding working with the neighborhood to explore a shared use agreement. And I'm just wondering if that is indeed something that you are amenable to or not. I wasn't quite sure by your statement.
I don't want to leave it open-ended. I mean, a shared access agreement, is that something we're looking for, a 20-year agreement? I don't know. But what I do know is that we're definitely open to having this be a neighborhood amenity, but also providing that amenity to our neighbor, or, I'm sorry, to our renters too.
And when you say you're open to having it be a neighborhood amenity, do you mean the community garden?
Absolutely. Yep. Yeah, and quite frankly, if we could shed the responsibility of managing this space with some priority given to our tenants, we'd be open to that. That would take it off of our plate. They can handle it better than we can. But, you know, what's this agreement and what does it look like? Just kind of speculating. That's tough.
Right. And Commissioner Rockwell. Oh, yeah. Commissioner Schrader, then Commissioner Rockwell.
I didn't mean to bump ahead, but I also want to just thank the gardeners for coming today. I also just want to add that this is, this is an ongoing debate. You know, the city's growing, and we're having a real big discussion about what is the best use of land. You know, we want to make sure we're using underutilized land. But for years, we've also used that land for gardens, for communities to come together to be able to give back and bring, to build community. And so it's a hard thing. You know, I think that there's some limitations of what the city can do for private property that is being sold. But I want to make sure that we don't lose, you know, what's been built through the community. So I appreciate that the developer's putting a community garden and to keep working with the neighborhood.
And Commissioner Rockwell?
I would echo that, and, you know, I just, I think based a little bit on your comments, I think that you have an opportunity to have a sort of a new model where you are in fact integrating your residents into the neighborhood in a really deliberate way, which is if you set a certain percentage of these for your residents and a certain percent, you know, hold at least a certain percent for, for community members that live beyond the project itself. I think that would be a really, it would be compelling model for others to see. And I think you could then gain a lot of the insights from the current community gardeners. I look at this, and as somebody who has my own plots, look at you growing some big trees just south of the garden. I think that might now be a very successful garden from a planting perspective. So you could get those insights as well. But I just, I would encourage, you know, we don't have, we have fuzzy at best authority to require you to do this. Well, we can encourage you to do it and put a condition there. I think I would do that. But, but I really would encourage you to think about how you can work with this garden, garden group to create that new model and really show, because we hear a lot of sort of common complaints of a new project as it goes up and that people aren't part of the neighborhood. You know, there's a lot of untruth to that. But, but this is a way of really explicitly saying, no, we are part of the neighborhood.
Okay. Any further questions of the applicant? Commissioner Magrino?
Sorry if I missed this earlier, but did staff, either Ms. Wallace or Mr. Wittenberg, have a position about, like, the legality of requiring them to include garden space for the neighborhood?
Commissioners, we consider, may encourage the applicant to engage in discussions, but in terms of the discussion that I've heard, we have to be cautious about not delegating your authority to another agency on the one part. And then the second part is, we really can't require that the applicant accommodate the public on their private property. It sounds like they're willing to engage in discussions and engage in some shared space, but we, it's certainly a basic property right to be able to tell the public that they can't come onto their property if they, if they choose to go that route. Okay, thanks.
All right. And we don't have any further questions for the applicant, since the public hearing is still open. I can ask if there's anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Is there anyone else? Yes. Well, we have someone else who'd like to speak behind you, so why don't we let her speak first? And please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Natasha Vianueva. I live at 1826 LaSalle Avenue, and I've lived in the neighborhood for about five years, and we've been in the south LaSalle Garden for about three growing seasons now. And being a renter, it's really important to me to have a feeling of permanence and investment in the community. And I think if we expect people to live in a dense way, which I think we all agree is good for sustainability, we need to preserve these third spaces, a place where people can go, they don't necessarily have to spend money, but they can enjoy nature. And, you know, if we live in a really tiny 800-square-foot apartment or something, it's really nice to have that outdoor space. So I just want to advocate for preserving all of the current green space, if at all possible, and then also advocate for the developers to come to an agreement with the Stevens Square Community Organization regarding preserving that land for a certain amount of time. We, the way we operate now is that anybody can come and garden if there's a space open. I would be a proponent for working on that same model. And I agree that we should take residents into account in their development, but, I mean, maybe we could even say that everybody is in a pool, and we're just going to pull people from the neighborhood, including this new development, because that's the way we currently operate. And I think it only adds to the fabric of our community to integrate everybody, regardless of their ability to pay, you know, market rate, or their ability to live in a building such as myself, which I believe is below market rate. And I just want to say that it's been a place, it's been a really great place for me to meet others also. I garden there, my partner gardens there, our friend Kemi who's on block patrol. That's just a fabulous way, I think, for people to come together. But also to the fence point, I think the word fence, like, triggers me now because, like, a wall. But I just want to say, like, what we've seen in the neighborhood is, the more accessible the places are, the more eyes on the street, the more, you know, people can go there and be there. I think that makes it safer, not, I don't think the fence makes it safe. I think people being there and people loving that space and spending time there is what makes it safe. So I just want to speak a little bit to that, and thank you for listening.
Right, thank you. And is there anyone else who would like to speak? Since you already spoke, I guess if you have a question or something? Well, we really should just have everyone speak once. I apologize for that. Anyone else who would like to speak? If there is no one, I will close the public hearing. And commissioners, we have, let's see, several applications before us, a total of six, starting with the rezoning. Is there, are there any further questions, or would someone like to start things off with a motion? Commissioner Kogel?
I'll move item A, the rezoning, approve the petition to rezone the property.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second to approve item A, the rezoning. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call a roll.
Coleman?
Aye.
Kogel?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Crowzer?
Aye.
Lupe here?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweezy?
Aye.
That's nine zero.
And that motion carries. Commissioner Kogel, would you like to continue? Perhaps we can take a few of these together.
Certainly. I'll move the conditional use permit, move to approve the conditional use permit with the one stated condition. And can I also move all three of the variances at the same time?
All right, yes.
All right, I will do so.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve items B, C, D, and E. Item B has one stated condition. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call a roll.
Coleman?
Aye.
Kogel?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Crowzer?
Aye.
Lupke-Pier?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweets?
Aye.
Nine zero.
And that motion carries. Finally, Item F, the site plan review. Commissioner Kogel.
I will move Item F with the, well, okay, I'll move Item F sans the fifth, sixth, and eighth stated conditions, and I'd like to add a fourteenth stated condition.
All right. And what is that condition?
The fourteenth stated condition is that the applicant shall work with SSCO, the Stevens Square Community Organization, to explore a shared use agreement for the proposed community garden plots.
All right. So we have a motion to approve Item F, the site plan review, removing conditions five, six, and eight, and adding a fourteenth condition that the applicant work with the Stevens Square Neighborhood Organization to explore a shared use agreement for the community garden. All other conditions listed in the staff report would stand. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Rockwell.
If I could offer a friendly amendment on that fourteenth condition, which is shared use agreement to explore creation of the community garden plots for both residents of the project and broader community residents.
Accept that. All right. And should we vote on that addition, or is that minor enough that it's just a clarification? I think that's, yeah. Okay. Yes, Commissioner Sweets.
Just so unclear what we're voting on, can Mr. Wittenberg or Ms. Wallace, can somebody define shared use agreement for us?
Commissioners, I think there's probably some ability for the applicant and the community to figure out what that means exactly. I think the emphasis on the word "explore" there, and Commissioner Kogel's motion is really what kind of satisfies our legal standard for ensuring that we're not requiring that they accommodate public access.
And Commissioner Crowzer.
I'd like to offer a friendly amendment to condition eight. Instead of completely removing it, simply stating that the elevations shall be built per the plans included tonight, as to not leave that completely open-ended, but what they presented here to the bill.
All right. So, we have an amendment, and we actually should vote on this one, since the original motion language proposed striking it. So, Commissioner Crowzer, your amendment is to add, or to, that the elevations are revised so that they are built per the plans that were shown at tonight's meeting. Is that, does that capture what we need?
I'm not sure there's any revisions needed, just that they are built for the plan presented.
Okay. That sounds good. Is there a second? So we have a motion and a second to replace condition number eight, instead of removing it, that the elevations are built per the plan provided tonight. Commissioner Lupke-Pier.
Yeah, I actually had a question for staff, and mine is actually related to Item Number Six, however, I think it's impacted by the proposed change to eight. Just how many different colors of each material are being proposed? I mean, if, in theory, we're limiting it to one, two, two, and one, and one, I mean...
So there's four colors of metal panel, although one, as you can see, the second down on the right, is a blend of three colors, which is one of the materials that's proposed. There are four different types of, types and colors of concrete, which are, you know, some of those are more visible than others. One of the types is kind of a budding, that Ace Hardware that's going to, you know, pretty much obscure that whole portion of the elevation. There are two types of cementitious panel, although you can see that the, one of those, the top material in the middle, kind of has its own color variations within it. I think that what the applicant referenced with regards to, that there are like six, if you exclude the color changes, so stone, metal panels, cement, resin, precast, maybe a missing one.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any further discussion on adding back in condition number eight with some substitute language? If there's none, we can just make this change on a voice vote. So all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right. So one opposed, so that motion carries to replace condition number eight. Going back to our original motion, is there any further discussion? So again, that motion is to strike conditions five and six, to replace the language in condition eight, and to add a fourteenth condition on the community garden. Commissioner Lupke-Pier.
Yeah, I am a little bit disinclined to vote in favor of this, only because I think it seems like a lot of different materials and a lot of different colors of each material. Like, I kind of feel like it goes against what we've historically done in these situations, and I get some other reasoning behind it, but some of it, I think, is just a little bit extreme. So I guess I would have preferred to maybe not strike all those conditions, so I would only know just based on that alone, because I think it's a little, it's a little much, so.
All right. And is there any further discussion? If there's not, I'll just mention, because we did have a number of speakers here tonight, and I think they provided some compelling testimony on the community garden, so I hope that all of you really understand, you know, we've added in this condition, although we're a little bit limited in how strongly we can word that or really force the applicant to provide that, but we certainly do want to encourage it. It sounds like they're interested in continuing that conversation, so I'm optimistic about that. And Commissioner Lupke-Pier.
Sorry, I did want to add, I'm not voting no because of the proposed condition 14, which I guess would be renumbered because we're removing the other ones, but I did want to say that in, I found your testimony very compelling, and I do think that, well, it is totally within their rights to do whatever they want because they own the land. It's private property, and we can't make them do anything with it. I think that in the long term, if they were really, if you're going to put your tenants or residents place of, I don't know, giving them a sense of belonging in the neighborhood, I think I would strongly encourage working with them. I mean, nothing makes someone want to stay and invest in a community like feeling like they're part of it. So I just want to say that not feeling separated, I think it's important. So I would just want to echo the encouragement to work with them on something. I don't know what it looks like, but I hope it's successful in bringing both the people who are currently there together with the people who are coming in.
All right, thank you. And is there any further discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second to approve Item F, the site plan review, with some changes to the conditions, and clerk, please call a roll.
Coleman?
Aye.
Kogel?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Crowzer?
Aye.
Lupke-Pier?
No.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweets?
No.
Seven to two.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on Item Seven, also concludes our business for today. We have committee of the whole this Thursday, and our next meeting is February 11. We are adjourned.